All right. Well, thank you. I would call the order to fill it based on the regular meeting dated Monday, April 1st, 2019 at 6:00 PM. It's over.
Trusty Lionel?
Here.
Trusty Selleck?
Here.
Trusty Wood?
Here.
Trusty Howell?
Here.
Trusty Mahoney? Trusty Andreessen?
Here.
President Nelson?
Here. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. That takes us to public comment on Agenda I and II. Do we have anybody that wanted to address the board to say that? Okay. We have no consent agenda. Old business is discussion of the fiscal year 2020 budget.
Um, we just wanted to take a minute to bring the budget back to you. At this point, there is a memo in your packet which kind of outlines what we have presented here. I don't know if I maybe want to turn this over to by instructor Tockington who put together his memo to walk you through.
Sure. At the last, the first budget meeting that we had on March 11th, we went through the annual budget and there were changes that the board had requested, so we made those changes. For the annual budget was to increase events marketing 2,000 for potential new events or income services, 7,500 for AEPs for the police vehicles, 15,000 for an additional G-WeC sign with the new brand name. We moved the video gaming tax and license fees to the capital improvement fund from the general fund, consolidated the TIFF and business development district fund from the Relied Fund at 12I. There was approval for the standing levels in the compensation plan, and then there was a discussion on water and sewer rates for each, in our price fund while keeping essentially the overall rate the same, so the residents pay the same for water and sewer services. And then at the March 18th meeting, there was discussion on the wall of kiosks, so we paid $5,000 in relation to the up under the budget.
So those are the changes from the budget workshop versus the budget. And so this budget, and we still have a surplus of approximately $200,000 with those changes. So at this time, we would like some consensus on whether there will be any additional changes to the budget or whether it should remain as it is for approval on April 15th, which will be the date of a public hearing.
Anybody?
There's a couple other items that are budget related.
Right, so the next thing included, you know, is the capital improvements plan. This is essentially the inaugural plan for the village. I work closely with the Director of Health, Force, Connor to go through each project and try and prioritize Ms. Jennifer, or Ms. Ms. Rettie giving the recommendations to board. And so what I was doing is taking a five-year look of our largest projects to need infrastructure needs, and the large to get ideas for the village is planning more in advance than one year at a time. So we structured it so you can see all the projects that we'd like to do first, so that if you go to the CIP attachments, attachment fee, the first listing is all the revenues that go into the capital improvements plan, followed by all of the projects that we'd like to do that are needed for the village. How, uh, due to funding constraints, the following features show each fund that is part of the capital improvements plan. So like the capital improvements fund with video gaming tax and the video license fees showed so much revenue, and then we prioritized which projects we could do without revenue. And anything that was highlighted in a blue color, not italicized, would be the projects that get deferred. So we took kind of the whole list of all the products and narrowed it down to what the village can afford right now. And we went through fund by fund to show you where that occurs and what funded it. So you have your street bridge fund, capital improvements fund, and then water and sewer funds. And then going forward, if the board likes it, the CIP will go forward and issue your end in the next year and re-prioritize projects again as the, the need of the village changes.
I meant to say that if a number of the projects listed are critical, I'd like to see if there are any sort of funding to give toward the reserve funds. Also too, I have a question about the water and sewer, where didn't we discuss a new, a build scheme that was going to end up reducing, I think it was like $2,000, was it down there? From 1995 down to 2010, that was until the end?
Yes, that'll be on the next agenda, the records. So just to be clear, the projects in the capital improvement plan that are listed for fiscal year 2020 are the ones that are included in the draft budget that they're consensus with. Only other projects would be in subsequent fiscal years, because we adjust that year by year. And any surpluses right now are going to deserve, and eventually it would be wise to adopt a policy where by surpluses are earmarked for capital projects. That's a good strategy. We'll bring that back as soon as we satisfy our general fund balance reserve policy, as soon as we have that satisfied. Okay.
The only other question I would want to bring up or point would be, and I don't really know technically how much money we're going to have to talk about to bring it out is the bringing the deep well back online. Whatever the radar issue is, we've got to mitigate that and bring it back up, so.
So the draft budget includes the engineering for the solution in this year, and then in the fiscal year 2021 is where you'll see that project in the capital plan.
Are there any sort of show you might know, like echo tests or something that they would be able to do to determine the amount of water in the shallow well? I mean, how long would we have before, when we're troubled?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, when they, when they drill the well, like they've got well blocks where, where the standing water level is, where the pumping water level is, where it's going to run dry.
Well, and I just want to, we need to keep that eventuality in mind, with the money that's going to be bringing the deep on back on, so.
I don't know if you recall that well, that shallow well out of Great Lakes has a lot more bounce fluctuation than the other wells.
Does it give, like, questionable readings?
No.
Does it have?
You've got more room to draw down, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
You're not as critical as, well, in a better shape of.
All right.
Also, we're not in a position really where we, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Connor, in a position where we can't use the deep well, we're just in a position where we can't mix the waters and use the softening process.
Correct.
So we would be able to provide water, we just wouldn't be able to soften the water in an emergency type of situation.
All right, well, the softening agent's something we need to talk about as well. So I've had a number of people even with softened water coming in, calling me and questioning it on the fixture failures in the homes and so forth, and so if we were to bring back on the real hard water, we'd have a lot of residents who own that one.
Yeah, it would only be temporary.
Correct.
And so in the last item, you mentioned the water and sewer fee rates. So when we looked at the water fund and the sewer fund, there was kind of trending where the sewer fund balance was increasing more than how the water fund was. So when we looked at, you know, there's more of a need to put more funding into the water fund versus the sewer fund. And so again, when we sat down with Director Connor, we came and looked at where we're at, and the water and sewer rate is actually the easiest solution, is kind of flip-flopping the two rates. So what was planned for the sewer rate this year for 2020 will become the sewer rate, or the water rate for 2020, the water rate will become the sewer rate. And those planned increases that were built up in the initial, I was calling it schedule rate plan from Trotter Associates that, those annual increases remain the same, so over through 2033. So over the life, there's actually a savings to the residents that they have because the sewer rates increased slightly lower than the water rates, or, I'm sorry, there's some more we let pay sewer, more than water, we have a few that, there's a few residents that are offset more, the other pay one or the other. Most households or most places pay both water and sewer. So there's a little bit of savings for some people in the water fund part of the sewer fund, and that also then applies to your West Dundy sewer rates. There is a little bit of a reduction in that fee there as well. So over the life of water and sewer funds during that 2033 mark, it's about a $41,000 decrease, and what those revenues would have produced if we stayed on the Trotter scandal. But the real need is to try to build more fund balance in that water fund, so you can, you know, get to the projects that are really pressing with the deep well. So we needed more of that shift to the funding for water.
So in that front sewer, do we want to?
Yes, we're, we're basically adjusting the rates so that if, if the rate stays the way it was today, which would be a deficit in the water fund, so it'd have to be subsidized either by the general fund or the sewer fund. So what we're doing is adjusting the water rate to match the actual needs within the water fund, so that we show a slight surplus, and increasing the sewer rate because there's a higher surplus in the sewer fund, so that there isn't that effect of zero out-of-residence bill.
How does that work? You know, what was it, a couple years ago, we, the board approved a, like a 10-year water rate thing, how did we handle that? Did we do that?
We've, we've redone it, that's what's in the packet. So we use the same escalators, we've just changed the rate for this year. And so what she's explaining is that at the end of that 2033, there's actually a slight savings to the residents, but the village will take a slight loss as a result of this, but it is the right thing to do with regards to the water fund.
It's approximately just under $3,000 a year with what the reduction would have to be.
Forty thousand overall.
Forty thousand.
And we felt that it was insignificant.
So the other question I have is, so we have an agreement, so, so they're going to be seeing savings as well, or is, is that, is there any role in working with them on giving more flows?
So that we can increase, yeah, increase the volume? Yeah, there's a, a higher production this year than a slight production in subsequent years, but we are working with them to get additional flow, and they have indicated that they are working towards getting us additional flow, so we will be better off than budget, and I predict we'll be better off than budget, only with this reduction.
So this time assumed there will be no change in what we're building, so the usage would stay the same all the way through 2033 for both water and sewer. So then, as Mr. Spence says that, we do think we see an increase via increased flow from West funding would actually increase in that. However, keeping it the same rate that we have now, just productive going forward, then it would be a loss because the rate we're charging a little bit.
I believe we had that, that study that Trotter did for us told us that if we were going to go ahead and raise based on each year going forward, a certain amount that by 2033 we'd be to the point where that enterprise fund is supporting itself. But how far into the future is it going to go? Because, I mean, to be honest with you, we hit 2033 and we're, we're paying for it by what's coming in, and we're not subsidizing it either from the general fund or any other, but for how long? You know, I mean, eventually those, those costs of maintenance and so forth and supply expenses are going to end up going up, so that's going to be never any bad.
We hope so. They're self-supporting now, as rear escalators in there provide the work. That is the prudent thing to do to keep it self-sufficient. It all depends on capital projects, but with both water and sewer, you can utilize very low interest site vehicles to complete your work, and then you avoid the spikes in time, and that's how you avoid subsidizing the fund. So it is a sophisticated study that they did, but really it's the approval by the board to annually increase the rates each year that probably will keep the water and sewer fund afloat. When, when they get in deficit positions, it's because there's a fear of raising water and sewer rates. That's when you see that happen. So I think they'll continue to be faithful, but just because we've adapted the plan for 2033 doesn't mean we're not going to take a look at it annually as whatever you are expenses, so.
They're actually having a capital improvement plan, helps us to gauge that, it's only a five-year, we have a capital.
A question on road patching. On page eight, it looks like you've got fiscal year 2019 estimates and nothing going forward, and on page five showing road patching, road resurfacing, et cetera. Couple different categories are there, look like that, which is nice. You know, I know a lot of projects are being deferred, that's pretty much always will be, but what I'm concerned about is that we're focused on getting the right loads and the right amount loads each year. So is this showing, is this showing, I think I'm drawing, which is a drastic reduction in the amount we're spending for our several years?
There is a reduction in road catching and resurfacing, so 19 of 285,000 anticipated by year end, but what we tried to do is shift the funding for road to be under the street and bridge fund.
Okay.
So it, it shifts funds, and then that way, whenever restored, we can go back and look, we'll always have road under street and bridge fund and track them back consistent, so we're not always flipping, begging for different funds.
Correct.
So that's a shift, but it does decrease the amount that we're doing in 2020, so we only have 50,000 scheduled for road patching in 2020, but then the following year we'll go to 16, so we're trying to balance out what the needs work to the funding.
And we can, of course, skip a year and then add a couple together if we want to get a more substantial program, or we can decide, the, the nice thing about having the capital improvements plan like this with all the equipment and all the project, and we can just decide, I'm sorry, Phil, I'm picking on you, we're not going to get that dumb drum, we need to break that drum, okay, our road. So it has the flexibility to do that, but we do need to sustain a program, because may or may not be sufficient, but we'll just have to look at it, you know, from year to year. But really, your question, I think, was if that, that it was moved to the different fund, and that's why it's appearing on page five.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So is there consensus on both the capital improvement plan and the water rate adjustments? Water and sewer rate adjustment? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. That's a new business aid. Is this, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion for a discussion and consideration of ordinance of the village of East Dundee couldn't gain funding in the right manner in the number of video gaming permits for these LLCs.
Discussion?
Perfectly. Have more than just prohibitive gaming and gas issues.
We do. And the difference is that they have gone through the trouble and the expense to comply with the state of Illinois.
Definition?
Definition, thank you. And they are becoming a truck stop by virtue of the size and the space that they're, they're using. So they qualify under a completely different category.
Do we know if there's any plan in the future, though, to expand the business with the, I mean, they, they're owned with three acres, but is that just formality and?
Is there any? I thought my, my question.
You mean the definition of a truck stop?
Is there any additional improvements? Are they just buying the green fields, or are there additional improvements that are being made?
Representative from TACR, representing for this year, maybe he can answer that question, but it's my understanding is the formality, there is, there is a certain amount of improvements essentially they have to make on the land to, to make it part of the gas station that's useful space, but they are insignificant. So it's the formality of acquiring additional land to meet the state law.
But keep in mind, they just went through a major extensive remodel and redesign of the entire store, so the revenue that they've increased by doing that.
That was actually in there this afternoon before the meeting, and saw that the, the shades are already installed, and the way that it's partitioned off inside is really well done, but it looks like on some of your drawings there were some additional roads or widening of the roads, or am I just misreading the maps?
My name's Joseph Reed, for all of you who don't know me, and Vice President of TACR, the gaming. What Thornton's did is they acquired a portion of the vacant land that is to the south after the car wash. They're including their plans and easement across the property they purchased along the river that will grant a access easement back to Route 25 for the two retail pads. So the drawing that you referenced shows the creation of that easement. So the bank still retains those two commercial pads in the front, but they require Thornton's grant them an access easement that will take the ability to connect to Route 68. The only improvements that the Illinois Gaming Board wrote into the law was three acres of land, a certain amount of diesel sales, which they more than made, and a definition of commercial truck parking, which is undefined in quantity or size.
Yeah.
So they met all those criteria, so they'll operate 24/7, and there'll be no liquor sales per pat, per core on premises. So that is how the truck stop license works, it's 24/7 and no on-premises consumption of liquor.
So I'm just having trouble kind of visualizing where the parking would be, and I know it's undefined, but had it been undefined and having really no parking?
There's, so, so when, when the, when the state gaming inspector, the special agent from the state police looks at the site plan, they identify areas, but next to the car washing, behind the building where the diesel is, there's a bypass lane, there's places in front of the diesel base, so that met his criteria, Agent Jones, you know.
I guess I would have to say that, that meets the criteria because you can't park a truck there, and I don't know if you necessarily want to see anybody work a truck there.
Right.
And I, and I think that by putting in the, the road easement behind the properties makes those other two properties a lot more likely to have something built on those.
Yeah.
I think that's an important facet.
But that road isn't necessarily being built, it's just.
Correct, but it could be built at this point.
Okay. All right, that's the only question.
Anybody else?
Yeah, can I ask, we have a, an actual ordinance that dictates how many licenses for gaming we have or we are going to allow, because if we do, I would suggest that we peel that ordinance, because every time anybody comes to ask for permission to expand or add gaming, we have to.
Actually not.
The only ones we've turned down have been for rules beyond our control, and that's the, our marathon.
Yeah, first, first follow the, the, the law.
The proximity to the school, church, that sort of thing.
Yeah, but again, there's, there's more that get turned down before it even gets to this level.
Okay.
So it just may not be a lot of those.
And the idea is not to turn it down, the idea is to have an opportunity to review whether or not it's turned down. There may be uses that come to you in the future that you may not want to, for example, if it was gaming cafe after gaming cafe after gaming cafe in a, in a specific location. So just so I'm clear on this, by approving this, if that's what ends up happening, we're not at risk of setting a precedent for other that may come before this and then use this as their hook.
Correct.
Well, they would have to meet the, whatever the state requires.
For a truck stop.
Correct. Okay. Anything else? Jeff?
Trusty Lionel?
Yes.
Trusty Selleck?
Yes.
Trusty Wood?
Yes.
Trusty Howell?
Howell.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen?
Yes.
All right, very good. You know, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I would be, I'm, we have a motion on this place.
I made a motion to withdraw the resolution authorizing an execution of a contract between Constellation New Energy East Dundee and the village of East Dundee is expiring of energy.
Setting.
Very good. Discussion on this.
Would you like an introduction on this item?
Yeah. So our current contract with Constellation New Energy is expiring. They are the sole provider of energy for all of our business accounts. It includes like the waste water treatment facility, the water treatment facilities, streets, garage, our street lights, water towers. So we are proposing a 48, 48-month contract with Constellation to renew. That would be a statement of just over about 20 and a half percent over the, the contract. If we were not renewing with them, we'd revert back to the commed rates for energy, and that would actually increase our, the current cost, so roughly about 40%.
How much?
40%.
40.
I think we're going to take a rock.
Yes, that makes sense.
Any more discretion on that?
Is Constellation Energy particularly like a municipal supplier, or can residents also?
So we have a rapport here that you can answer.
Constellation does both commercial, industrial, and residential. All suppliers are, all suppliers that are in areas in the state of Illinois are basically required to supply power to residential. A lot of times, though, the residential side being such a small amount load, they don't really give them savings beyond like three or four months. It makes more sense for residential people to stay with bundled service and some of commets out of office services to help them out. What we've been seeing on open market is a lot of residential customers will get a call from a bunch of different suppliers like NGI or Direct, in which they bring them on and promise them savings, but the savings only for three or four months, and then after that, they're increased, you know, 10 to 15% above what they're currently. So it's usually they, they do, but they really don't offer them on an individual basis because it doesn't help the suppliers.
Didn't we one time have an agreement with Constellation where people would be reviewing on a three to six month basis, the?
Sort of the aggregation?
Yeah, for, but it was just supply, not distribution, cause where we would be able to bounce from one supplier to another depending on the rate, without any interruption in service, of course. It was, it was, I don't know if it was for commercial business, I thought it was just residents, but.
I used to tell, I did both of that, but I know kind of the commercial and industrial and the residential, I would, every year I would review it. The reason why we haven't really, I had announced it to you guys, is that the residential side, the municipal aggregation, which was big four or five years ago, has pretty much died off because the initial, to go back a little bit, when, when municipal aggregation first began, the Elmer Power Authority, our IPA, went out and bought futures contracts going out, and when they did that, they bought really high ones. So when municipal aggregation started up, there were such a big savings that all utilities, all municipalities going to the open market. After the initial three or four years, that hype purchase or block of power dissipated and was gone, so now the IPA's pricing on residential side is just as good as what the open market people are getting. So there hasn't been much savings. Now, there is some new changes that are coming down the line in the next year or so, and it's tied to commeds, they've been given, granted the right to do more smart metering, which now means they're going to be putting meters in everybody's residential homes in which they're going to be able to communicate with meters over call lines and stuff like that, but they're also going to now dictate to every residential person their own personal capacity cost. So that might in the future help out residents of East Dundee and hurt unfortunately residents of like Barrington, because in the past, and what made it unfavorable for East Dundee is all of the municipalities got the same capacity and transmission obligation, and a whole bunch of municipalities got together and probably lawyers and stuff, and they went to the ICC and complained, and they said it's not fair, because a resident who lives in a house in Barrington is going to use more power and be more demand on the system than a resident who lives in East Dundee or New Lennox or something else. So those new meters coming in are going to give people more individual capacity cost, which would probably benefit looking at municipal aggregation down the line, but right now, it's cheaper stained wood commed. it's cheaper staying with commed.
They're not going to be dictating usage though, correct?
No. No, commed is required, has unlimited.
And if they're offering it now, let us determine what you really mean or saving money, so.
No.
All you're doing is lowering my thermal sensitivity or whatever.
Yeah, I, they're always going to offer programs like that, but no, they're not going to have anything where they're dictating usage.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, anybody else on that? Kevin?
Trusty Ryan?
Yes.
Trusty Sill?
Yes.
Trusty Wood?
Yes.
Trusty Hall?
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Andrew?
Yes.
Okay, you've got the financial reports in your packet, just a couple of things for me to report tonight, we hosted the Metro last, former directors, thank you, at Bourbon Street Taffey, actually, it was great, I think a lot of people were impressed.
I counted, I think, almost thirty people there, so I would guess it was probably maybe
more than twenty-six mayors and more admins, or something like that, a lot of buzz about all the stuff that's going on in downtown from the other man, so it was kind of cool. So, anyway, I think that went well, it's the first time we've hosted them in, in our town, hopefully we'll do that at some point in the future. The other two things I want to, I have tonight is I just want to thank the four candidates that are willing, it takes a lot to actually get up off the couch and try and do something, so I'm grateful that we have residents that are willing to step up and do that, not everybody is. And I'd want to remind everybody that the audience there, tomorrow is your last chance to vote, so please, people also get up off the couch and go press the buttons. That's all I got, but we're on the table, trusty Sill, you're reporting, trusty Andrew, Senator.
Trusty Mahoney?
Trusty, get out and vote, your vote makes a difference in this small town.
That's right, yes it does.
Trusty Mahoney? I don't want to keep on and on about lights in some of our businesses, but no, we're going to have more gaming, then maybe these lights fit right in, because it kind of gives us a Vegas vibe, but I would still like us to adhere to the sign ordinance, is that they are dictating that. I will actually hand deliver a letter, maybe, so maybe we'll be needing some.
I would like that.
Trusty Wood?
Go ahead.
Trusty Hall?
I will report.
Moving right along then, Village Administrator?
I did want to update you, there was a request for an update regarding the building's parking lot, so I did meet with Roger last week and we are in discussions, he has acquired the Dick West property, and so he's preparing to do something with the Dick West property, the house that's adjacent, and we also discussed this parking lot, we're still early in those discussions, if you'd like to see that completed relatively soon, but he's requesting a significant financial contribution from the village, so we're going to continue discussions and when I have more information, we'll provide that to you.
He's not requesting any, any development on the parking lot this year.
Yes. So, I will report it to you, and that is all I have, thank you.
Awesome, Village Attorney, Village Engineer. So I have a quick question for you, I don't remember, I don't remember the last time that we've done this, but streets and utilities, we used to have a meeting every year or so, where you would come in and give us the fire plan for the organs to the deterioration sculpting, you know, where we were at, and it was a ranking that needs to be away, or we had in that process, is that something that we're going to be doing this year?
Was that budgeted?
We budgeted for a street condition rating survey and starting to look at how Joe would discourage you to do that, we'll take it in the fall.
In the fall?
Yeah.
All right, very good. All it works?
All it worked.
Finance Director?
Just a reminder now that we went through the budget stamping and the water sewer rate change tonight, that the public hearing noticed an informational flaw in the people that take gaming to be the public hearing.
All right, all right, public comment on anything at all?
No.
All right.
I just went up and talked when the chief was here, so I haven't been around a lot lately, you know, for the reasons, but just about, you know, seeing paths and all that, I thought I did a wonderful job on behalf of the village and stuff here. My one question is that I had, and it's the same one I bring up every year, is about kicking all the streets around me, and there was nothing being done on those streets. I mean, there's five streets that they took, I don't know why it's going up in north and doing that, because there is nowhere, I mean, I wait for the day, it was never going to rain, to see how bad it affected me, and it's huge, you can't park on, you know, there are no ones walking blocks and blocks, and for what reason? I know it was for staging, supposedly, but I wasn't one part of it, because I was out on, at quarter to ten in the morning on those streets and there wasn't anything on.
What streets were on?
First, I said north, Lincoln, Leith Holtz, they had a little bit on, but they all tied into being on water street this year, going down, I mean, really nice, I really appreciate that, that part of it, and I knew the village of Cartersville wanted, and I think probably, I'm just guessing this, that bricks had a voice and whatever, I know that, I didn't talk about turning in, like in Illinois and doing that, but, you know, with the wedding going on that day wasn't probably the most ideal look for them to have, but I'm just saying, all the streets around me, I think I'm saying, I don't understand why even north, the one towards the town was closed with street, you know, no parking signs with nothing on.
We'll take a look at it, yeah, we'll take a look at it for sure. Okay.
Good question, Gary.
Art?
Our, for like, Gary, the, the street closures, did they, were the streets then opened back up as soon as that parade kicked off and walked away?
Yes.
Okay, so what?
Soon after the parade, yes.
Okay, but I, to your point though, it doesn't do any good while people are queuing up, so.
Right, I mean, it's, you know, I kind of understand about the staging part, you know, doing, I think it'd like if you were at a, at a golf outing, you know, after the last, you would think they would be pulling those up or something, but, you know, like one thirty.
I don't see why they don't.
One thirty or something in the afternoon, and it's just that, people are set, once the parade goes on, you're already, you're already going to stay, especially when there's that thought of rain, and it was going to have been a worse scenario, brought rain and cold and stuff, you better be, and the ones that tried to come to us, they told me they couldn't get there, so where they parked, they parked down there, and they never made it down, because they're thinking, why is it blocked, they don't, you know, they were there by two trying to look for parking and, and like you said, it's her way before the parade, I mean, an hour or two before the parade, there should be something on, nothing. So they're just saying, why do they have all these signs closed?
So what's the.
So they won't even leave coming from, will they start maybe, make my way down here? Because they don't know that uncertainty, and they said, as soon as the parade went by, they went down to see if there's parking, the signs were still up and, you know, all the, no parking, and I'm just like.
I think we can take care of that, when you say the road's blocked, the road's not blocked, there's a sign that said no parking, right?
Yeah, I believe you have.
Okay, I get that, what I'm saying is, you know, the parade starts at eleven, by eleven twenty or whatever, each of those side streets is clear, so they can just open that up again and they just, just figure the signs were taken down, right?
Like they're saying, there was, there was little to no action, I mean, I, I would think that.
We're just trying to figure out how it's happened.
So how long was the no parking signs there? How long did this stay?
Someone said they saw them take them down about, about one thirty, twenty or two, or something like that.
We started taking down the no parking signs, the road closure barricades were up until the parade was over.
Right.
But the no parking signs started coming down, I think really during the parade, we had someone that had some time to, between, before and after the parade, he started taking the action, no parking signs on the turn.
So this, this sounds to me like it's just a, a communications thing with, I mean, as well as a staffing slash volunteer thing, where as soon as the street clears out, somebody's behind them taking all the signs down, even if they just weren't laying them on the ground and put them back.
Well, I, I don't even know that, I left because I was ill, and it was like, you know, ten minutes to twelve, you know, going out to the back way, you're not going, you know, towards home, not into an altar, and going out to a back way, it was just not, I'm not, they're still out there doing, I was, it was frustrating anymore seeing that it's, you know, there's nothing on it, it's, the parade is down the street, you know, and everything, and it's just like, I'll deal with it, you know, the next time I come in, and I'm like, like I'm saying, I'm very, very appreciative of Eileen and whether the board here helping with like the, the staging of going down Water Street, I mean, I don't think that, that affected, you know, Cartersville or traffic any further, what, you know, the area where we come out there normally, and there are more and more, and it just, it just makes perfect sense, but I don't see all of this about the no parking, I'm just like.
Well, you know, every year, we tweak this, we get better, we appreciate your input on this, I'm, I'm glad you told us and we'll, we'll fix that, so.
Congratulations here.
It sounds all good, reasonable fix, so I appreciate your, your comments. All right, anybody else? We have no executive session this evening, unfortunately, so I'm just going to go to the door.
All in favor?
All right.
Any quotes?
All right, folks.